Okay, this is the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission. This is our fifth meeting. I am Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined to my right by the newest member of the Commission, Council President Brandon Scott. To my left, Director of Finance, Henry Raymond. To his left, Comptroller Joan Pratt. To her left, Deputy Inspector General Jerry D'Angelo. And to his left, Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Council President Scott is on the Commission by virtue of his position as established in the Charter, so he replaces former Council President Jack Young. In addition, Councilman Leon Pinkett will be running about 15 minutes late today. I don't think we have anything to vote on, but I'm going to take the liberty to add an agenda item to the end, just because we have a proxy for the first time today with Mr. D'Angelo, so we should probably figure out how we want to handle that in the future in terms of whether or not those proxies can vote or not. First item of business is approval of the minutes from December 17th, 2018. Those meeting minutes should be on my colleagues' desks.
I'll make a motion, but can we change the, it's the CAFR, C-A-F-R, instead of C-A-P-E-R? I don't know what the...
Yes, ma'am, I'm sure that's a typo. So that's on page 200, number 4. We'll remove the P.
Page 204, right, and in the...
And then there's, oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
It was two places.
Thank you.
Oh, there's another place where it...
In four, under one of the bullets.
Got it, okay. We'll make that change.
Next to the last bullet, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair?
C-A-F-R.
And then I'd also like to propose on the first page, we have board that should be commissioned at the very top of the first page. Colleagues, are there any...
Chair, I couldn't hear what you were saying about that last part.
Sure. I got you. Let me take a step back, too. So we've been joined by Kalen Young, who's Legislative Director for Council President Scott, and we've also been joined by Nina Themelis and Matt Stagman, representing Mayor Jack Young. There are three proposed changes to the minutes. The first one is my proposed change, and that's to replace the word "board" with "commission" at the very top to reflect the actual name of the entity. And then Comptroller Pratt suggested two changes in Section 4 on Page 2. There was a typo in there, and we had the CAFR spelled C-A-P-F-R, instead it should be C-A-F-R.
I had two questions about the minutes. One was in Section 5, where the very last bullet point, per the Chairman, "Do you all want to invite the new Commissioner and their Chief Financial Officer to the next hearing in the spring?" I could not remember what was the resolution of that, and so I, since it was noted in the minutes, did we, does anyone else recall whether we consciously decided not to do that?
Bullet point, I can't recall. I'd like to propose we just strike that, because that was going to be in part of the discussion when we talk about the agenda for the next meeting at the end. If there's no objections to that, I'd say we just strike that.
Strike that. And then the second, the second question I had, in the summation, "When will you begin the audit for Group A performance? Can you put together a matrix for same?" Was the expectation that that matrix was going to be shared before now with the Commission?
Councilman, where is that?
In the summation towards the end of the minutes, the second bullet, "When will you begin the audit for Group A performance? Can you put together a matrix for same?" Because I haven't received one.
I, I don't know. I know that we do have a, we are going to get a comprehensive update from the city auditor as to the status of the Group A audits that were conducted this calendar year.
Okay, then I'll just leave that.
It may have been sent by the former city auditor, and if it was, I'll take responsibility for that, that it wasn't disseminated, so I apologize for that.
Okay.
But we'll be sure, for the minutes, for the next one, to put a bulleted list at the end of any requests that we have of the city auditor or any other city agencies.
And then, I'm sorry, the last one was, the very last bullet point is, "At the next hearing, we will invite the agency heads to the next meeting to discuss their audits," because that, I do remember that part of the conversation was just more as a conceptual, that it seemed like we were missing out on discussion opportunities to just be essentially talking amongst ourselves about the actual agency audits. It seemed like we should have people here from those agencies to have that discussion. And so, is this something we're just going to just bump forward to the next one?
Yeah, if it's all right, I think, I think we can bump it, because we're also going to get a somewhat detailed summary of the findings from the Group B audits from 2018. So that'll give the city auditor an opportunity to present that to us, and then we can be selective in terms of who is a group we would like to invite to come in and discuss that in December. We're also, I think, going to have to schedule a little more time for that December hearing, if we're going to have eight, up to eight different agency heads in here.
Well, I, I mean, and I guess this might even technically be a question for the Law Department, but is there, I mean, I know that we're the Biennial Commission, so we meet at least twice a year. Is there anything keeping us from having another meeting? I mean, is, like, could we split that December meeting into two different meetings so that we could only have to worry about four at each of them?
Yeah, we can certainly entertain that at the, at the end of the meeting today when we discuss the agenda. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the minutes?
Well, I'd just like to note that when the audits are presented before the board, there's extensive conversation, and do we think it's necessary to do that here, or could the Commission be notified that it is being presented at the Board of Estimates?
I would, I think I would respond the same way as my previous statement. Let's talk through that at the, at the end of the meeting today and work through that, but I think we can figure out an agreement on all of that.
Okay.
Seeing that there's no other recommendations for edits to the minutes, is there a motion to move the minutes?
I, so move.
Okay. Motion by Pratt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raymond. Costello, yes. Raymond?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Pinkett is absent. And Henry?
Yes.
Do we want to have the discussion about whether or not we can have a proxy, because Mr. D'Angelo wasn't able to vote? Is that something that should be addressed in a subsequent Charter Amendment, which I've been working on to make some minor tweaks to this? Or is it something, I mean, I don't have an issue with...
I don't, I don't have problem.
Does anyone have an issue with, with a, with a official proxy voting?
My, my only issue in what appears to be the absence of a representative from the Law Department, is, is there anybody here from, okay, yeah, so my, my only question would be, I would hate to be in a position where something in the existing language would be interpreted by the Law Department as not allowing proxies, such that if we allowed it, we would then have to do the vote over?
Let's, let's err on the side of caution. Mr. D'Angelo, I hope you don't take any offense, and we'll, we'll get an opinion. Matt, can you get an opinion for us from the Law Department? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. President?
Yeah, I'm indifferent. I just think that, like, if we, when you were, I know you said you're working on a Charter Amendment already to address that issue. I think that we know that there's example of that. For example, Board of Estimates, we know that sometimes Director Childs not there and someone's in his stay, and when I'm not there, the Vice President normally will be in my stay. So I think that we should look at those kind of things in the language, that's all.
Absolutely, and I'll be sure to closely coordinate with your office, Mr. President, on that Charter Amendment. Okay, meeting minutes are approved. Status of 2019 Group A audits from our new city auditor, Josh Pash. Mr. City Auditor, please take it away. Your desk is fine, if you want. And colleagues, everyone has a printout presentation in front of you?
Yes.
Fantastic. Take it away, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Costello, President Scott.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Are we being televised? Yeah, then you're going to have to use the mic, otherwise people won't be able to hear you at home. Yeah, that's, as, as we just got the signal from the control booth.
Why don't you stand, please, because it's televised?
Good evening, Chairman Costello, President Scott, Madam Comptroller, and Commission members. My name is Josh Pash, I am the city auditor. I began this position on June 3rd, 2019.
Mr. Auditor, can you pull the mic a little closer? Because they're very, we went through this early today, people could not hear, they're very sensitive, and they're old, so...
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Josh Pash, I'm the city auditor. I began this position on June 3rd, 2019, and I would like to introduce Tandie Mao, our Deputy City Auditor. Today I will present the status of the 2019 Group A audits, including findings from the completed audits. I will also present a high-level summary of the 2018 Group B audits. I was not involved in those audits personally, and I'm not prepared to answer detailed questions on them. However, all those audits are posted online on the Comptroller of the Baltimore City website under Audits and Reports. I'd like to refer to the City Charter regarding the Biennial Audits. The Charter specifies two types of audits. One is a financial audit, which is the principal agency's financial transactions, including all revenues and receipts and expenditures. And then the second one is a performance audit, which the Charter describes as assessing the principal agency's practices to determine whether the agency is operating economically and efficiently, and whether corrective actions for improving its performance are appropriate. I also want to take a moment to specify the difference between a performance audit and a performance measures audit. A performance measure is a tool in a performance monitoring system. Monitoring implies that management's tracking and checking performance against relevant norms. A performance measure audit provides an independent assessment of the accuracy of the performance measures reported, including a review of the processes and controls underlying those measures. A performance audit is an independent examination of a program, function, operation, or in general, a process, to assess whether the entity or the process is achieving economy, efficiency, and effectiveness. Our office is currently looking at increasing the effectiveness and the usefulness of the performance audits by expanding the scope beyond the performance measures in an effort to add more value to the city. We have completed two audits as of this time. It is the Mayor's Office of Human Services, which was a financial audit, and that was completed in, on July 31st, and the Baltimore City Information Technology, which was a performance audit, which was completed on September 4th, 2019. In a few moments, I will get to the schedule that will show the completion dates for the rest of the Biennial Audits. For the Mayor's Office of Human Services, the financial audit, we issued a qualified A qualified opinion is an opinion that expresses that the financial statements present fairly the revenues collected, expenses paid, and the balances reported, except for one significant factor. And the second, significant factor is the basis for the qualified opinion, which is the second section. That is, that, that is surrounding the grant cash balances and the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in grant cash balances, and related adjusting journal entries that were posted. The reason, which we'll get into more detail on the next slide, was the cash balance showed $42 million for four grants, and those grants were expense reimbursement grants. So, $42 million would indicate that the city owed the money back. In other words, the, they should only be collecting, we should only be collecting cash once we've already expended the money, so we really shouldn't have a cash balance. And then, when it came to the adjusting journal entries, that activity was not appropriately reconciled at the agency level, and so adjustments that were made at the Department of Finance and CAFR level were not reconciled with the agency, which led to misstatements that materially affected the balances reported on the statements for 2018 and 2017. So finding one is basically what resulted in the qualified opinion. So, the cash balances were materially overstated, and the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in grant balance for those periods showed disclosed grants that received funding and revenue, which is on an expenditure reimbursement basis, that materially affected the cash balances. The programs were Head Start and Continuum of Care that showed $20 million and $18 million in cash, and the Community Centers Grant Program showed a cash balance of $6.9 million, and other grants for Continuum of Care had a $3.4 million balance.
Excuse me for a second. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Were you expecting us to hold questions until the end, or can we ask questions as we go?
Please hold.
Okay.
We found similar balances and findings for fiscal year 2017. And this is also a finding that will be, that we'll see again as we go into the 2018 Finding two, I'm sorry. For the Mayor's Office of Human Services was a, a repeat finding from a prior audit, and that was surrounding a Service Organization Control Report. A Service Organization Control Report is an independent assessment of IT systems that the organization uses to give an assessment on the security, the effectiveness, the accuracy of those systems. So when an organization, let's say, uses Office 365, so that whole IT system is managed outside of the agency, and if that software were to use personal identity information, which was the case of the Office of Human Services, then the expectation, the best practice and just for security purposes, the agency is expected to get an assessment of those IT systems that have PII information to make sure that they are secure and accurate, and those reports were not obtained. So the next is Baltimore City Information Technology. So this was a performance audit, and the first finding is that the BSIT could not provide documentation to support the actual amounts of the four selected performance measures in the budget books. And when we inquired as to where the data was, it was lost through the ransomware, and it was not backed up, because it was saved to personal hard drives. Finding two was on the 311 call center, and we noticed that the actual, the actual metrics were significantly below the target metrics for two years in a row. And when we made the inquiry of BSIT, the response was they had no control over how many calls they were going to get to 311, which led us into a more detailed conversation with them, that the performance measure they were using was not effective performance measure, and didn't have any clear link to action they could take or to their performance. When this was presented at the Board of Estimates, a request by the city council president was that we revisit the Board of Estimates in 60 days in order to discuss these findings and the follow-up findings, which I will mention next. I met with BSIT yesterday, and they're on track to have that meeting and have an action plan. During the BSIT Information Technology Audit, we followed up on three findings. Basically, the findings were there were no written policy procedures to document the target natural resort results. The second one was performance measures did not, the performance measure target was not met. And then the third one had three different bullet points, which is Enterprise Innovation Application Services, which the targets were not consistently reported from year to year, and that supporting documentation was not available to support it, and that actual performance measure data during the period was not available or complete. When we asked for status of these findings, we did not get a response. And when we met with BSIT yesterday to discuss it, they have an action plan to address those as well. Next is the current status of the 2019 Biennial Audits.
Before we jump into that, I'd like to get into questions on MOHS and BSIT. Couple slides back, you mentioned that performance, performance measures data were saved electronically on responsible personnel's hard drives?
Correct.
That can't be right. That's real?
Wait, where, which one?
Are you questioning the word "responsible"?
No, 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 I'm questioning whether or not they're storing it on their hard drive and not on a server or the cloud.
One of the things that I've learned in my short time here is that a great number of Baltimore City employees store entity information on their local computers, and that's it.
Wow, that's mind-boggling to me. Is your office going to be working with them moving forward to get them to, I mean, do they, do they really understand that that's an issue?
Yes.
Okay. Because they're the agency that's, that should be tasked with educating people that that's a problem.
Correct. The, we met with them, they have action plans to address the findings, they have action plans to address their performance measures as a whole. They're not all put in place yet, but they have an action plan, which they are finding, and they asked to meet with us to look at the, the hardiness of their action plan, to actually make sure that it was robust enough.
Is that action plan something you could share with the Commission?
I, all I know is they have an action plan. I don't have details on the action plan.
Okay.
They are putting together their metrics, they are putting together a number of different ways to address what we brought up in the report and a number of other things, but the plan is to present at the Board of Estimates probably within the next month, month and a half.
Matt, when that gets submitted to BOE, that plan, can you make sure we get a copy of it? And if you could get it to Margery, and she'll share it with the, with the Commission. We've been joined by Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank, oh, Mr., okay.
Councilman Henry?
Thank you. Going back to Slide 3, the, the overstated account balances in the Office of Human Services. Actually, just a general question about the fact that this is an audit for an agency that technically no longer exists, in that my understanding is that the current administration has dissolved to the Office of Human Services. I guess, has anyone shared yet information with your office as to where the fund balance for that office went when it was dissolved?
No. One of my projects planned for the next fiscal year will be to dive into the Grants Division of Finance and to get an understanding of how they're coordinating with the different agencies.
I'm sorry, did you say the Grand Division of Finance?
I'm not sure of the formal name.
Okay, all right. No, no, that's, it's, it's, okay.
It's referred to as the Grants Management.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought he said grand, like, I was like, the Grand Division of Finance. It's like, well, Henry's right here, we can just, okay. All right, then, more specifically about finding number one, in, if I'm understanding this right, the issue was that we're bringing grant money in, but that money is supposed to be going out to reimburse expenses?
The money's supposed to be coming into us to reimburse expenses.
Right, yeah. So, one of the things that I know I get a lot of complaints about, maybe my colleagues as well, is nonprofits who complain to us that there was some entity that provided a grant to the city, and they were supposed to be getting paid, but they have then laid out the expense, and the city is supposed to reimburse them, and we're not getting them their check on time. And so my question is, would that problem be a potential either cause or symptom of this?
That would likely be a symptom.
Okay, that would, that would be one more symptom of this. And would that be something that would involve us checking with, or somehow, or is, does part of your process involve following, I was going to say following the money, but you're tracking the money through accounts payable to see if there's a point at which there's money in the fund balance here, because accounts payable has not yet cut a check that it should have already cut by now?
So, I have not dove into the whole process of how it's managed. My understanding is that the management is not consistent across agencies, and that the coordination between the agencies and finance is being worked on.
Inconsistent?
You could say that.
Well, I mean, and, and so I'm trying to get a sense of if it's, if it, if it's, if it's different behavior for different agencies, that reduces the likelihood that the problem is in accounts payable or somewhere else. It increases the chances that the problem is in the individual agencies if the behavior is different and the outcome is different in each one.
Can you be a director?
Yeah, I'll, I'll address this. At a high level, I do not believe the issue is that, this issue is not related to nonprofits not being paid.
Okay.
Yeah, this is an issue related to city agencies that receive grant funds that are not reconciling their grant expenditures to the city's general ledger, which is resulting in misstatements.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, the next question I had was on the following slide, finding two, where it says, "The agency used the software that stores personally identifiable information, however, did not obtain assurance that the software had appropriate security controls." Is, I guess, how much of this is an issue for the now no longer in existence Office of Human Services, and how much of that should have been the responsibility for BSIT? Is that, would that have been something that you, you would have uncovered in the course of your conversations and discussions?
So, at the time, during these fiscal years, and I can't speak to at today, as of today, but the agencies were procuring and running their own IT-specific software that was unique to them, and the, was not a strong or controlling oversight by BSIT. So BSIT, during these fiscal years, was not generally held responsible for getting these. It was up to the agency who was procuring the software.
Okay, all right. So if anybody was going to make the overriding statement that that's ridiculous, and if we have an Office of IT, they should have the authority to make certain that each agency is using the software that is more, most appropriate for it, that would not be something that would come up in, you wouldn't do that in a financial audit. If you were asked to do a performance audit, though, that might come up as something going to the, I believe the distinction was the economy, efficiency, and effectiveness of the agency's operations.
Correct. We would not recommend that BSIT decide which software and agency who has a specific need and use of software would select their software. We would recommend that BSIT has a set of security protocols and security requirements that every software that's acquired has to have.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, Councilman, we're gonna just try and follow the two-question rule.
Oh, sure.
Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a quick question. I'm looking at page five of the handout I have, it says Baltimore, B sit, FY ended June 30, 2018, and 2017 continued, and its finding number two, related to the performance measure, does not reflect the productivity of 311 call center.
Correct.
In, in that analysis, were there, I guess, recommendations, or was a performance measure identified that could reflect the productivity of the 311 call center?
So, along the lines, just as speaking with IT, we would not, we're not subject matter experts of IT, and we would not say, "This is the best performance metric for you." A common recommendation would be is there are other cities that have, you know, strong, robust measures, and you could reach out to them. There's also literature out there that we may be aware of, and we could give to them saying, "Here's robust measures." When we met with B sit yesterday, the conversation was, they have a strong direction on where they want to go with their performance measures, they know which ones are meaningful to them, and they will be developing those over the next couple of months. They have an action plan and are working on those, and they did say that they plan on changing the measures that they are in the budget book, and that will be discussion with the Department of Finance Budget Book Group. I don't know the formal name of that.
Okay, so, so they, they were, okay, I just wanted to make certain that in our analysis, we weren't just finding that this performance measure wasn't just, it wasn't inadequate, but then making certain that there's a process where they will, you know, reevaluate their measures and make certain that we do have the appropriate.
Right. The recommendation, which is not included in this presentation, but it is in the report that is online.
Okay.
Basically specifies to identify measures that would have a clear link to the action be taken and meets your objectives.
Okay. That, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you, appreciate it.
Colleagues?
Yeah.
I know, I'm just, let's let everyone get a turn. Colleagues, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I'm looking at your, your second, your recommendation specifically to that, where we recommend that B sit modify the performance measure such as the percentage of calls answered by 311 to reasonably measure the productivity. And that is exactly why, I had always thought that the point of the target of how many calls are you gonna get was to be an establishing number so that the number of calls actually dealt with could mean something in context. So, I guess my only question is whether that is listed as two different numbers or just listed as a ratio or a percent, I'm not sure I see the difference. So, okay. The, the next question I had, and I guess this, I guess we should stop there because you haven't done the, wait, can I do the IT follow-up? Because I'm looking at the prior year follow-up where it says, "Auditors were not able to verify the implementation status of prior findings and recommendations because B sit did not respond to the auditor's request for that information." So, I guess, oh, I'm sorry, this is, this, on page five, it's the, the bottom, the bottom slide on page five. I guess this question is almost as much for the commission as it is for the auditor, which is, what should be the next step if we have an audit and the agency just doesn't respond to recommendations and findings? Should, should we, is that something we should do here as part of the biennial audits oversight commission's work, or is that then just something where then it goes back to the council to do whatever committee hearings it would find appropriate to follow up on a given agency's performance or lack thereof?
Can you, can you summarize that real quickly, Councilman?
Um, so, if, oh, let me, I've been, I've been practicing this, I'm sorry. So, if, if an agency does not effectively cooperate with the city auditor or the Department of Audits in the putting together of the audit, should it be the responsibility of the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission to follow up with the agency, bring them in here, and have a conversation in the context of this commission?
I got it, I got it. Have we had any issues with any agencies this year? Everyone's cooperating, right?
So, the, I mean, the one that the commissioner is referring to was the nonresponsiveness of IT for the follow-up audits, and I believe that was addressed by the Board of Estimates and will be followed up with the Board of Estimates. Other than that, there actually are some with the prior year audits, which I was not involved in, but that was an issue that came up then, but other than that, we have not had that problem.
Okay. If we have that problem moving forward, bring it to the commission, and then we'll handle accordingly.
Okay.
Work with the administration, and we'll, everyone's, the administration's committed to this, so everyone's gonna cooperate, shouldn't be that difficult.
Okay, for the remaining biennial audits issued for fiscal year June 30th and 2000, June 30, 2018 and 17, the, they're listed, all of them are listed on this slide. B sit, we issued on September 4, 2019, which we mentioned. The financial audit is slated for October 30, 2019, to be completed. Baltimore City Fire Department is slated for their financial audit to be completed by November 13, and the performance audit by December 18. BDC is slated for performance audit to be issued on October 2. The financial audit is handled by another auditor. Department of Finance, the plan is to issue both their performance and the financial audit on October 30. Department of General Services, we are scheduled to issue the financial audit November 20 and the performance audit on December 18. Department of Housing and Community Development, we're scheduled for October 30 for the performance audit and the financial audit for November 27. Department of Public Works is scheduled for October 16 for financial and October 30 for performance. And Mayor's Office of Human Services, the financial audit was issued, which we discussed, and the performance measure audit is scheduled for October 30, 2019.
I'd just like to take a moment to commend you and your office. Madam Comptroller, thank you very much. Three years ago, there were a lot of news stories about how audits weren't getting completed on time, and I'm looking at this chart, and to me, it appears that 15 audits are gonna be completed on time as required by the charter this year, so thank you very much. Really appreciate it, and I'm glad that what we've established together here is actually working, so.
Thank you. We were requested to present a summary of the findings from the biennial financial audits issued in fiscal year, the fiscal year 2019 audits. What we did, there was quite a bit over the 16 audits, so what we did is we presented the finding and then the agencies that received that finding. So, the first, and, the first one is grant revenues expenditures and fund balances are inaccurate. This is the one that we mentioned with the Mayor's Office of Human Services earlier that I had mentioned, showed up a number of times last year. And the agencies that received that finding were the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, Planning, Recreation and Parks, Police, and Law. We had a finding untimely reconciliation of grant activity, and the Planning Department had that finding. We had a finding incorrect accounting treatment and untimely expenditure reimbursement. We had, that fell on the audit of the Health Department and Department of Transportation. We had a finding of inadequate controls over revenue receipts. Department of Health and Department of Transportation received that finding. We had a finding of adequate controls were not established over non-emergency transportation program and vendor invoicing, that was under the Health Audit. We had a finding of inadequate controls over human resource information system access, that was under the Department of Human Resources Audit. These are all performance audit. These are all financial audits. The, we had a finding documentation for expense, revenue, and encumbrance transactions were either unavailable or did not agree to the amount on general ledger, that was a Department of Transportation finding. We had a finding that expense, revenue, and encumbrance transactions do not have evidence of approval by authorized personnel, and that was a Department of Transportation finding. For the performance measure audits, we had a finding that there was no written policies, procedures for monitoring, controlling, or reporting valid and reliable information related to performance measures. That one was a common finding. Recs and Parks, Police Department, Health Department, and Planning Department had that finding. That finding will show up in a little bit different variations as we go on. There was a finding inconsistent performance measure target from previous years, so that means that you couldn't actually compare the target and the actual from one year to the next because the way they calculated the numbers was different, and there was not an explanation of why it was different. And the Planning Department, Health Department, Department of Human Resources, and Law Department had that finding. We had a finding target amount was incorrectly reported in the budget book. Recreation and Parks and Department of Transportation had that finding. Am I off by one page? We had a finding, we were looking for the MBO waiver requests for our audit testing, and the Law Department did not provide those waiver requests upon request, so we weren't able to complete that portion of the audit, which was what I was trying to before. We have, under Recreation and Parks, the positions, temporary positions are not advertised through city websites as the full-time positions are. We had a finding insufficient review procedures to validate target metrics used from year to year. Police Department and Health Department had that finding. Expenditures exceeded the revenue in a fund that expected to be self-supporting, that was a recs and parks finding.
Can we take a pause for a second?
Sure.
I noticed in that previous slide, actually, I'll let you finish, go, go ahead.
More to go. The Health Department had a number of inventory control findings. Duties for proper inventory control were not adequately segregated. Stockroom contained obsolete and damaged equipment. The stockroom contained several value pieces of electronic equipment, mostly computers, that were unmarked, untagged, and not listed as part of their inventory. None of their seven stockrooms were able to be fully reconciled with the inventory listing and the physical count, which means that what they had listed as inventory did not agree to or reconcile with was actually on the floor. And then, we had some of the overdue reversal forms were missing key information, and, that actually is not inventory control one, and the last two are not, but they relate to the Health Department. And the schedules to support the annual consolidation of opioid education and naloxone distribution state report contained various clerical or formula errors. And that is the summary of the 19, 2018 audit findings.
I had a question, I was just chatting with Director Raymond here, and a few slides back, you say that no clear sufficient documentation to support the targets and actual performance measures, and I was kind of complaining to the director that several of our agencies aren't actually tracking what they're supposed to be tracking, and I've publicly complained for a number of years now of the, kind of, the lack of coordination between the agencies and the Department of Finance when they put together their budget book with the performance measures, and that the performance measures aren't always the most effective measure of, of how the agency is performing. For example, DOT might have a, a measure that says number of potholes filled, as opposed to, you know, percentage of potholes that were filled within 12 days, or percentage of potholes that were filled and done right the first time, the type of, the type of performance that citizens are expecting out of the agencies. So, anyway, Director Raymond has revamped that, so I'd like for him to explain what that is.
Yeah, because of the fact that these types of findings are coming up, agencies are aware that if performance measures targets are not met in comparison to the actuals, we have to footnote it in the budget books, which means the agencies have to explain why the measure was not met. If they change or modify the methodology related to the measure, that has to be footnoted as well. And agencies are required to provide their documentation to support their targets and actuals to the Finance Department, so that we have that information on hand. And that's on an ongoing annual basis.
Great.
And what we're hoping, so the goal of this is, over time, these types of findings should go away.
Great. Colleagues, any questions?
Mr. Chair, I just had a couple questions, or just, if I could just get a little bit more detail. Also, in the finding summary, summary, it said, I'm sorry, page seven, inadequate controls over human resources information system access. Can, can you give a little, shed a little bit more light on that?
So, I mentioned at the beginning of the session that I have not had an opportunity to thoroughly go through all of the 2018 audits. They are online, and I do not have the specific details of that audit and that finding.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, that's definitely not my field, but it seems like that, that's a critical piece of, you know, human resources having, you know, make, protecting the integrity of the information that's in the system and who's able to access that, and if there, if there's issues with that, that's, I mean, that's a major, to me, it's a major issue.
I agree, and we will be following up on that finding next year.
Okay. And then, and then also, on that same page, expense, revenue, and encumbrance transactions do not have evidence of approval by authorized personnel. Are we saying that, you know, certain expenses, you know, were, were allowed but didn't have the proper, you know, person, you know, person with the proper authority, you know, overseeing those, those transactions?
So, one of the, one of the sayings and mottos auditors have is, "It's not documented, it's not done." And so, we were looking for evidence of that approval, and they did not have that evidence of approval, which, for reporting purposes, was, it was not approved. I cannot tell you whether, like, the management who was supposed to approve it had any idea it was there, but they definitely did not have it documented showing that that was received timely.
And, and so, I mean, in, in that, I guess, investigation, I mean, is there, were there any instances of fraud, or?
So, this was a, what page was that again?
On page seven.
Top matrix, the top box.
Can you repeat your question on that?
I'm sorry, so, yes, so it was page seven, the, I guess, finding summary, biennial financial audits, and it was the last bullet, expense, revenue, and encumbrance transactions do not have evidence of approval by authorized personnel, and it was found in Department of Transportation.
Right. So, our audit procedures, even though we look, we try to put audit procedures in there to detect fraud, we did not detect fraud in this case.
Okay.
However, an audit is not designed to detect fraud, so I can't give you a high level of assurance there.
Okay.
We will be following up on this finding also next year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues?
About this, or moving on to other things?
About this. Okay. We are on to agenda for the next meeting on December 18.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I meant, I did have other issues with the overall group. The, the first one I want to do is I want to go back to the, I believe this is the fiscal audit for the Department of Health. Under the management response, eight, Health wrote back, and I'm quoting from theirs, "Despite timely identification of issues, many of these errors are beyond the control of BCHD fiscal staff." fiscal staff because BAPS is the entity ultimately responsible for controlling activity on the city's general ledger." And so I guess that kind of goes back to our earlier conversation of how do we, how do we have that conversation if the agency's assertion is that these issues with the general ledger aren't either their fault or under their control because the general ledger ultimately is controlled by BAPS? How, is, I mean, is that something where, and again, this goes, this goes to, are we the group that should be having that conversation, or should that conversation be held elsewhere?
What page are you on?
I'm on, I'm looking at Department of Health Schedule of Findings, page 14, fiscal years ended June 30, 2017 and 2016. The second to the last paragraph, about halfway through.
Where, where are you, in the minutes?
No, he, he's, he actually has the
The audit.
Audit report for the Department of Health for the fiscal years ended June 30, 17, and 16, and he's on page 14. So it's a document that
This is performance or financial?
Financial.
So mo- most of the agent, for most of the audits, the finance department wrote the management response, but Health wrote their own.
Okay.
And in this case, they flatly said that some of the errors that are, that they're acknowledging are beyond their control.
So what's the
So the finance department responses that agencies are responsible for properly recording their transactions in the general ledger. The finance department is responsible for reviewing the transactions, but there are hundreds of thousands of transactions each year. We're not able to identify and correct every transaction, and that's what this response is related to. But the bottom line is the agencies that are initiating the transactions are responsible for properly recording those transactions at the time that they initiate those transactions.
And I don't think anyone's arguing or disputing that, either in the health department or here, but, you know, earlier in the same paragraph, as cited by BCDA, which I suppose is the Department of Audits, many of the financial records maintained by the Bureau of Accounting and payroll services include numerous miscoded transactions. BCHD fiscal staff has observed deposits posted to incorrect budget account numbers, current transactions posted to prior year grant accounts, and expenses pushed onto closed or frozen accounts. So I, I guess what I'm saying is at, at some point, we have to figure out where we're holding the agency accountable for making sure it's doing its part right, and how do we hold BAPS accountable for making certain that they're doing everything possible to reduce the number of miscoded transactions?
Yeah, I think I would take the position that it's the responsibility of the agencies to be proactive, to ensure all transactions hitting their general ledger are correct. It's also equally the same responsibility for the finance department when we're making adjustments to an agency's records, that we're doing it diligently and correctly also. I think the crux of issues like this goes back to the fact that there's not proper reconciliation of the transactions, whether it's the original transaction or a journal entry that is either reallocating an expense or correcting a previous entry. So it's, it's incumbent on all parties to be as diligent as possible so that all of the, all of the transactions are correct.
Okay, so I guess when we get to the schedule of future audits, maybe one of the ones we should consider is a performance audit for BAPS to make certain that it's doing its part of that. And then, because, because since everything funnels into them
That's already occurring through the Department of Finance.
Yeah, the Department of Finance has a performance audit.
For a specific
Just like all of the other agencies.
Okay, yeah, okay. And then, Mr. Chair, the other question I had was, most of these agencies, when there were issues found by the Department of Audits, had some type of management response or, you know, corrective action that they agreed to take. But for DOT's audit, even though issues had been identified, it says under auditor response and corrective action, just no plan from DOT. And I'm wondering if that somebody, if that, is there anything already in place that would connect the new administration of DOT with what I think, time-wise, was a lack of action by the previous administration at DOT? Like, who, or, I'm sorry, in plainer terms, who tells Sharkey that his predecessor never bothered to respond to this?
I think Director Sharkey is still aggregating the list of things that his predecessor never did, or should he not? So, you know
But who, who makes certain that this gets on that list?
Well, here's the good thing about Director Sharkey. Prior to coming to DOT, he was at DGS, which also undergoes the same process, so I'm quite certain that, that he's familiar with this, and that his team will be looking at this. But if you would like to mention that to him, you're, you're certainly welcome to.
Okay.
I'm happy to do the same, but, you know, Director Sharkey has inherited a
Wealth of opportunities?
Yeah, sure. He's inherited a very, an agency that lacked accountability and was very unorganized, despite having a lot of good people in that agency. And he's, he started to change a lot of things over there. I'm very excited about the work that, that Steve is doing at DOT, and that we have a director there of such high caliber. So I'm certain that he's aware of this, but I will be sure to, to remind him about it. Any other questions, colleagues? Okay, let's talk about the next meeting. We're scheduled for December 18, 2019. The thought there was to discuss a summary of findings from the calendar 2019 audits, of course, with the exception of BSIT Performance, MOHS Financial, as well as BDC Financial, and to also talk about what the commission's thoughts are on the scope for performance audits for calendar year 2020. So what we'll do is provide guidance to the city auditor and ask that he take that into consideration and look at specific performance objectives during calendar year 2020. I know there's some discussion about other things, so at a minimum, we, we're going to plan to do that, and I'll just open it up.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
So I just want to clarify, you're planning on holding the commission meeting on the 18th of December because I'm seeing here on this list, that is the date of estimated report, the estimated report issue date for two of the remaining audits.
That's, that's when we're going to hold it?
So does that mean that there, it's just going to be released at the board meeting that morning, and we're going to have the hearing that evening with that day to review them, or does that mean that we're going to get copies early?
Councilman, I can't commit to that right now. That's three months and two and a half months in the future.
Well, that, I, I'm just saying, can, this, this kind of goes back to the conversation at last December's hearing where we got a bunch of the audits, we, I mean, all of these audits from the last group, we, they showed up in some of our mailboxes, like, the business day before the hearing.
I understand, Councilman, so, so let me, let me share my perspective on it, if I may. So we're going to hold the hearing on December 18. We have five elected officials on this commission, an inspector general, and a director of finance who's responsible for managing a $2.9 billion operating enterprise. It takes a lot, it is very challenging to schedule these hearings, to get all seven of these people in the same room at the same time. I recognize that two of these audits will be presented to the Board of Estimates that morning. If the city auditor is able to summarize those findings in a similar fashion at a very high level, as he did today for the 2018 audits, which is certainly a reasonable request, I believe, especially considering that you're probably very close at this point in the cycle of those two audits to knowing what those findings are going to be. You're, I'm assuming, preparing to enter your quality control process over the next month for those two audit products, and engage with the agency for their official agency comments. Is that, is that a fair statement?
So for the fire department, which is scheduled for December 18, we are still in the early stages of that audit.
Okay.
For the ones scheduled in early to mid-October, those are closer to the final stages.
Okay.
And we basically have all of our, all of our auditors working, you know, to get these through and splitting our time between them. I just want to give the option for the commission, I am not opposed to presenting the findings in, after December, January, and in calendar year 2020 for an audit that we, you know, did towards the end of 2019, if that would be more helpful to give you a notice and time there.
Well, I
Hang on, so I appreciate the offer. I'd like to stick with the December 18. If the city auditor is able to summarize, summarize those findings in, you know, a presentation like this and get that to us a couple of days beforehand, that would be very helpful. If you don't have time to consume the fire department and DGS performance audits, we will certainly address those at the subsequent hearing.
I, I was going to offer a potential other compromise that would not put all the pressure on the director of audits to do a extensively detailed summary, and simply ask if there, if these audits are being presented at the board for its consideration on December 18, I assume that the scheduling of that factors in hitting the Board of Estimates hopper deadline, which is in advance of December 18. So what I'm asking is, could members of the commission simply get copies of the actual audits when they're sent to the Board of Estimates, not the day that they're approved by the Board of Estimates?
So, Councilman, I, I don't think that we can get copies of those until they're presented to the Board of Estimates.
Why not?
I was about to explain that. I don't believe that there are, that, that is legally allowed until it is officially presented to the board. I am not in the law department, we can have the law department look into that. I think we are making something that is very simple much more complex than it needs to be. We have a hearing scheduled on December 18. We're going to have a summary similar to what you see on page seven, eight, and nine, where the performance findings are categorized, and the city auditor will present those to us. He will have, that is not, I do not believe it is an unreasonable ask for us to ask you to summarize fire and DGS, even though those are being released that day. You will have known what those findings are for a couple of weeks. We are not straining the city auditor. He is shaking his head and appears to be agreeable, so we will do that. And if you want to pursue getting these two audit reports in advance, you are welcome to pursue that, and, and reach out to the Department of Law and talk with whomever in the council president's office or the comptroller's office helps to coordinate the, the Board of Estimates. But I do not see that as, as some, not having those two audit reports in advance of the morning of December 18 as any reasonable impediment to this commission's work.
And I'd just like to say that the audits are available to the public once they are noted at the Board of Estimates, and they are immediately put up on the comptroller's website.
And thank you for having, I noticed that we have 24 audit reports on your website now. Makes me very happy, seriously. So, we're going to, we're going to discuss on December 18. We're going to approve minutes, we're going to talk about the status of the, we're going to talk about the summary of findings for the 2019 Group B audits, or Group A audits that are completed. We'll discuss the scope for performance audits for calendar year 2020. And back to where I was about eight minutes ago, I'd like to open it up to the commission to, for us to discuss collectively any other items that you believe should be on the agenda, or any other guests that you would like present at that hearing. Yes, it'll be the same agenda. Councilman Henry?
So pursuant to the minutes of last December's hearing, I would like to suggest that we invite the agency heads for those audits that will be considered at that, that will be reviewed at the December meeting. We invite the agency heads to that meeting. See, this is where it gets, this is where it gets confusing, because I understood, and it made sense, to say that we should see which ones we really need to come, but I don't know how we can make that determination until we see the audit.
Councilman, we will invite all of them, if that will satisfy you. Does that satisfy you?
Sure, I just, I'm just, I'm pointing out, I'm pointing out that
Councilman, it's not necessary. Your, your point is well taken, we will include all eight of them.
Okay.
Make sure that all eight of the Group A audited agency directors are there on December 18. Matt, can you please work with Marguerite? Those, those eight agencies were in this presentation, I believe, so that's going to be that's going to be BSIT, Fire, BDC, Finance, DGS, DHCD, DPW, MOHS. Yep, that's on page six. Okay, Councilman, anything, or Madam Comptroller?
Right, I would also like to invite the councilmen to come to the Board of Estimates when these audits are being presented. The fiscal officer will be there, and in addition to the agency head.
I thank you for the invitation. Mr. Chair, the other question I had is, again, referring back to the minutes from last December's meeting, should we also be expecting that at the December meeting, there will be a matrix similar to the one in this slide on page six of the handout with the next groups, you know, the next groups' agency reports, and which financial ones are going to be done, by when?
No, that is not a reasonable ask, because Mr. Pash has to schedule out 16 different audits over the subsequent calendar year, and there is no reasonable way, I'm speaking from the perspective of a former auditor and audit manager, that we could reasonably expect him to have any level of accuracy associated with that table. We know that he needs to produce 16 audit products in calendar year 2020, and I am very confident that he is going to be able to do that, because he is on track to complete 15 in this calendar year. So he will get to those in the order that he gets to those based on his staffing within that office, and we'll go from there. And we're going to, we're going to assume, based on prior performance, that he will get those 16 done.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't intending it in any way, shape, or form as a sign of my lack of confidence in his ability to do them. It was more along the lines of, so that we would know when to schedule the first of these hearings next year, because a chunk of them, a chunk of the audits would have been completed in time to review them.
Councilman, I'm going to retain my privileges as the chair to schedule hearings for the commission at my discretion. We will be in compliance with the charter. We will have two hearings at a minimum for next year, and we will continue to conduct business of the commission as we have done for the previous, now, five meetings, which has been effective. We have provided oversight and accountability We have provided oversight and accountability. We have ensured that these audits are being completed, and that there is opportunity to hold the administration accountable for the financial and performance findings, and we are going to continue to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, is there any other discussion? Okay, so we have an agenda. We will be back here on December 18, and we are now in recess. Thank you.